This conference will now be recorded.
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectment for Monday, December 14th to order. First order of business is the first selectments report. I have a couple of things to share with you this evening. So today, sadly, I'm sure everyone is very aware of this. It's the eighth anniversary of the Sandy Hook tragedy. Please pray for the souls of the 20 beautiful children, Jessie, Charlotte, Daniel, Olivia, Josephine, Anna, Dylan, Madeline, Catherine, Chase, James, Grace, Emily, Jack, Noah, Caroline, Jessica, Benjamin, Aviel, and Allison, and the six courageous educators, Dawn, Mary, Vicki, Lauren, Rachel, and Anne Marie, and their families and friends. Time passes, but the sadness surely remains. In the words of my friend Scarlett Lewis, mother of Jessie, choose love always, and we can overcome the hate that sparks tragedies like this. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. One other very sad piece of news this evening. I have to report that an elderly Darien resident passed away with COVID on the 12th of December. This elderly individual was hospitalized beginning in the middle of November. That makes a total of six deaths and 21 hospitalizations since the beginning of the pandemic. As of today, there are cumulatively 539 COVID cases reported since March from 390 households. The town, in terms of employees and staff, the town has five confirmed positive cases, two additional presumed positives, and five folks in quarantine. And the school district has 14 confirmed positives in the school community, resulting in 168 quarantines. In the best interest of students, families, and staff, the Darien Public Schools will be going full remote, beginning on Friday, December 18th, until the holiday break, which begins on December 24th. The current plan is to return on January 4th with secondary schools in hybrid mode and elementary schools in person. But that, of course, is all subject to change to see what happens with the virus over the next couple of weeks. Vaccines. Today was a really exciting and hopeful day in Connecticut and across the country. Hospitals began receiving the Pfizer vaccines, and frontline healthcare workers were the first to receive one of the 31,200 doses delivered to Connecticut. Each person receiving the vaccine needs two doses approximately either 21 or 28 days apart, depending on which vaccine is being administered. So doing the math, about 15,000 people will benefit from the vaccines that will receive today. And I know that deliveries will continue over the next period of time. Remembering that there are three phases to the vaccine rollout, 1A, 1B, and 2, and appropriately so, frontline healthcare workers, emergency responders, residents of nursing home and long-term care facilities, and the elderly will be receiving in phase 1A and 1B. And then the rest of us will be eligible for the vaccines likely the middle of next summer, if all goes well. Our health director has convened a vaccine committee consisting of our emergency management team, health department staff, and town healthcare advisors. The committee's charge is to plan and coordinate vaccine delivery for our residents and to provide updated information on vaccine delivery schedules and providers. We imagine that the rollout of the vaccines will be very carefully orchestrated. For example, right now, it's only the hospitals, some hospitals, that are receiving the vaccines. Ultimately, I believe the governor has made agreements with certain providers, like CVS and a few other large pharmaceutical agencies, to be distributors of the vaccine. And I know that our local testing partner, EverPoint Health, would like to become a vaccine provider. So they're going through the necessary administrative efforts up in Hartford to try and become a vaccine provider. So we'll share more as we get more information. So turning to the white stuff that's coming. We got a little bit of it this afternoon. We're going to get a whole lot more, starting Wednesday night. A significant winter storm is predicted to affect our area on Wednesday evening into Thursday afternoon. A storm watch is currently in effect for our area. Heavy snow is possible with incredibly totals accumulating of up to 12 to 17 inches possible. Wind gusts of up to 45 miles an hour are also possible, especially along the Connecticut coastline. Travel will be very difficult, if not impossible, during the heart of the storm. So I encourage everyone to begin to prepare for a very large snow event. It's always recommended that you have enough food on hand for several days. Winterize your vehicles. Make sure your fuel tanks are sufficiently filled. Make arrangements or be prepared for snow shoveling and driveway clearing. Make sure accumulating snow doesn't block your home or your vehicle's exhaust pipes. And if you need to run a generator at any point if you lose your power, make sure the generator is located outside to protect you from carbon monoxide poisoning. Never use gasoline, propane, natural gas, or charcoal burning devices in enclosed areas. And be mindful, if your generator is outside, just clear away the area around the generator so that you're not accumulating exhaust. And test the batteries of your carbon monoxide detectors. You know, we're New Englanders. We know about snow. We got a little bit of a break last year. So it's, I know our DPW is ready to go. Our emergency management team is ready to go. So I think we'll be just fine if everybody's prepared. The EverPoint COVID testing schedule is going to change due to the pending storm. They're going to be closing at 2:00 PM on Wednesday. They're starting at 8:00 and closing at 2:00 on Wednesday. And then they will reopen, hopefully, on Thursday by 11:00 AM. And with that, I want to wish everyone a very peaceful and healthy holiday season. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and cheers to ringing in 2021, which holds the hope and promise of putting COVID-19 well behind us. Thank you. Kate?
Just a couple of things. We are, majority of budget requests are in, so we're already well into the process. I'll be reviewing departments' requests this week. And then Jamie mentioned about COVID. We are continually working on COVID-related issues here, trying to make sure we can continue to serve the public and keep both the public and our employees safe while doing so. So that takes up a lot of our time and sometimes our weekends. But we're getting it done. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, do we have David and Sarah? Thank you very much for submitting your reports from Thriving Youth and Blight. Is there anything you'd like to share with the public this evening?
David?
I don't really have anything to add, but if you would like, I could just do a very quick cursory of what occurred. Is that useful?
Yes, sure. Go ahead.
So the Blight Review Board met on the night for our last meeting of the year. There are currently six active blight cases in town. We're still awaiting a receipt that the owner of one of the properties, you know, has confirmed that they've received the receipt. There are two cases in warning status, and there are 14 cases on watch status. We reviewed the condition of all, and progress for all the properties on the active blight list. On three of the properties, the commission has decided to move forward with the assessing of fines and providing a formal notice. Mr. Riley, our chairman, is going to contact the attorneys to move forward with that process. For one property, we've asked the blight officer to check with the fire marshal and the building official, the way the code reads. There is a potential issue with safety in terms of access to the property because of the situation that's there currently. So we've asked him to check with both of them regarding that specific property. And on our one case in town, that's a chronic case, the board is contacting the attorneys to update the current lien amount to reflect the current accrued fines.
Thank you. Any questions for David on blight? Sarah, would you like to report for that?
Sure. We had a great discussion last November 19th. Unfortunately, I should have submitted it earlier. The task force hosted Scott McCarthy, from the Darien Public Schools Administrator, and Joy Sixsmith, who's the DHS Connections Counselor. And the discussion was around how the schools are addressing right now the current needs of our students. It's so difficult for the kids right now. And so we broke up into small groups to discuss how the Thriving Youth Task Force and other groups that have been represented from the task force to figure out how to continue the work of the schools right now. So the next meeting is slated for January 21st. But the upcoming news is that the Community Fund and the task force are bringing Chris Heron back this spring on Wednesday, February 10th, which is big news. Chris was a phenomenal success when he came to visit the high school a few years ago. There is an opportunity for members of the community and groups in the community to sponsor the event. There is an availability, and there's a form on the Community Fund site to help to sponsor. And right now, the Depot, YWCA Parent Awareness, and the Darien Library are offering generous financial support towards the event right now. But that's it right now. And I did submit the minutes to Kate, so thank you.
Great. Thank you. Chris Heron's awesome. I'm glad he's here.
Absolutely.
Kate, would you like to give us an update on the Oxford Elementary School building project?
We're moving ahead. We had a meeting last Thursday and approved a number of the subcontractor bids. We have four more to be reviewed this week. And we anticipate next Monday that we will have our final meeting of the year to approve the final four and also review some of the alternate items that were originally proposed. I'm hoping that we will find our answer with regard to off-site soil storage by this time. If not, we move on to hauling the soil away. I would say that the mobilization has started. The site contractor is out there putting down erosion protection items right now, which will have to be approved by the building department before actually digging can begin. But with the snow coming, I don't know what the story will be on approvals until they get the job done without the snow in the way. We're hoping that they'll be breaking ground next week. That's our goal. So I'll be, more to say after our next meeting, which will be on the 21st.
Thank you very much. Exciting news. And Chris, I know the project is still on hold, but I want to ask if you've heard anything new about the territory?
Yes, I've emailed everybody an updated report. This was based upon an email we received, the committee received on December 10th from Chairman Mike Segrow, which was in turn from a report from Weston and Sampson, who was the consultant and the engineers behind the project, working with Neil Hawke Architects. It outlines the steps. The only two areas at which the committee continues to work in absence of meeting is regard to the regrading of the parking lot for the flooding and the boat ramp and the dredging. So right now, the activity over the summer to date is getting the dredging samples to move forward so the boat ramp can be utilized efficiently. We're waiting for updates, or I should say, they are waiting for updates from the State Deep and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So the committee is not meeting. It was just an update from an email we received on the 10th.
Thank you very much. If there are no questions about any of those liaison reports, we'll move on to our new business item, which is to discuss and take action on town hall hours. So Kate, why don't you start off this discussion?
Okay, so I'm going to go over a little bit of the memo I sent to you all. We started this, the idea, because we have a number of our department heads and assistant department heads and high-level non-reps living further and further away from Darien. You know, we have people who come from Newtown, Milford, and even as far as Guilford and Port Jeff in New York. Some of our assistants also live up in Newtown, Seymour, West Haven. We have one up in Beacon Falls. So we talked about it. The idea was, we want to try and make us continue to be an attractive community to work for. And, you know, we can't pay people enough to, in many cases, move down here, especially, you know, at those levels. So we need to find a way to make us attractive. We didn't feel it was good management to say that, yeah, department heads, you can work four days a week, but everybody else had to work five days. So we were in negotiation with the town hall union, which would be the working group affected. And so the result of the negotiations was the schedule, the trial period that we are in now, with Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we work 8:00 AM till 5:15 PM. And on Tuesdays, employees split the shifts. The town hall is open from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and each department splits it, where some employees work 8:00 AM to 5:15, and other employees work 9:45 to 7:00. The concept behind the late night Tuesday was, if we're not open on Friday, we needed to address access to the building and to try and reach out to that segment of the population that commutes to the city and for whom getting here by 4:30 means they have to take at least a half a day off of work. So by offering later hours, we're not making it perfect for them, but we're at least making it a little bit easier for them to get here. And of course, all this was done, negotiated, pre-COVID. So when COVID hit, we still went ahead with the trial period, which was scheduled to be originally from June 1st to September 4th. But we felt we hadn't really had a proper chance to address it because much of that time, town hall was closed to the public. So as you know, we extended that trial period through the end of this year. So we're approaching the end of that trial period pretty quickly, and we should be making a decision whether or not to continue with these hours. Do we feel that operating with these hours serves the public well? And does it provide the desired benefit to the employees? So I gave you all memo, you know, I did a survey. And I have to tell you, you know, we haven't heard, outside of the survey, we have not been hearing from the public complaining about not being able to be here on Fridays. We do have certain departments who continue to work on Fridays. The building inspectors continue to do building inspections, and the fire marshal's office continues to do inspections. I wasn't able to reach out to the fire marshal, but I know the building department, they are not in the building, so they're not answering the phone. So if somebody does call with a question on a Friday, they get voicemail. So if we decide to continue with the Friday closures, that's something that I think should be addressed. And then the senior center was intended to be open on Fridays. Obviously, right now, it's not open at all. So, you know, we sent out this survey. It was emailed out to over 2,000 people through the Parks and Rec email list. We put it out through Twitter, Facebook. We received less than 300 responses. Only one-third of the people who responded even knew that we had changed our hours. And honestly, that doesn't surprise me because I think people don't, until they need something from town hall, they don't even think about what our hours are. So I think if you'd asked people before the survey was done, you know, before we changed the hours, if they knew what town hall hours were, they probably would not have known. We only had a couple of people who said they had taken advantage of the later Tuesday, and that is true to what we were hearing. People did say that they would take advantage of it if they needed to. There were about two-thirds of the people who responded said they did not feel that they would be inconvenienced by town hall being closed on Friday, mainly because, most of them said they didn't need to access town hall on Fridays, and others because they could do whatever they needed online, anyway. And then I sent you all the comments. You know, we had an open-ended question that said, you know, please tell us how you feel you would be inconvenienced by being closed on Friday. So, you know, they run the gamut, from well-thought-out to complaining about the trash at the train station. So that's where we stand.
Thank you, Kate. You know, to be sure that when this began, it was a different world than, you know, certainly now and for the foreseeable future. A later evening on a Tuesday night is probably not what people need. I was interested in the comments that came back from the survey about the fact that most people who work, if they're working from home, they're for sure home on a Friday, and some would like to have access to town hall. But what really sort of spurred my thought was, you know, we are, as a general rate, of moving services online in response to COVID, and, you know, wondering if we can take a look at some of these responses and, you know, continue to provide multiple ways for people to get the business done that they need to get done, whether it's in person or online. There's going to be people that, you know, simply don't want to come to town hall. I think it's going to be a long time until everybody's vaccinated and people are feeling safe to go out and transact normal business. So I'm eager to hear board comments this evening. Krista?
Kate, can you tell me what other communities in our peer group in the world of education, we would say, Durham, the New Canaan Greenwich, Wilton, Weston, operate on a four-day work week?
Yeah, you know, give me, I know Danbury for sure does a four-day work week. They do four 10-hour days. We did do some certain things. I don't believe there are any others that do simply four. There are a number who do four and a half. They're open for half-days on Fridays.
Or closed on Friday in the summer. I recall that some have special summer hours.
Yes, some have special summer hours. Oh, let's see. You know, I know we did, we did some research. Now the question is, this was, it was two years ago that we did the research, or a year and a half ago, and...
Well, is it fair to say that only Danbury does a four-day, and the other communities closer to us do some, either a five or a four-and-a-half day?
Yes, that is fair to say.
Summer? Okay. Thank you. That's sufficient, Kate. That's fine. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yep?
Well, two things come to mind. First of all, the trial period is really not even a trial period, at least what you contemplated, because it's been totally turned upside down by the pandemic and by the need to go to remote, which is interesting because maybe the future really does talk more about remote. I know a lot of people who commute to New York are talking about not only one day, maybe two days, maybe three days, working remotely effectively and efficiently and with the approval of their offices. Certainly, some office time is going to be helpful because of people interacting. So I don't know whether you really got a trial period. I understand the union says, well, after the trial period, we're committed to making a decision. But did you really have a trial period? At least a trial period that you foresaw as a trial? I don't think so. And I don't know what feedback you got, other than, hey, we can do, we can do a lot of this, work remotely, and we're continually trying to do that to provide greater services to the citizens of the town, which is very commendable and probably really will work for us. How that will translate into office hours, I'm not sure. So I'm, you know, I'm just not sure what to take from all this. I love, I love some of the comments. Some of them are not repeatable right now. But I love them all. If you ask an open-ended question, be prepared for an open-ended answer.
You know, Kate, you're absolutely right about not really having the trial period. The problem is, we can't continue with this schedule for much longer and not have it become permanent because of the union involvement. It would become, it would be harder to, for one, at this point, I think, if we wanted to extend the trial, I think we'd have to go and get them to agree to that as, to extend it as a trial, as a continuing trial. But there would come a point where if we just said, and I think right now, the vast majority of employees left, they like it. They want to keep it. So I think it would be a problem if we continued, said, oh, well, let's do another six months trial. At some point, if we say, well, yeah, no, we're not going to do it. We've done another six months trial, and we want to end it. We could end up with some kind of labor issue. So I think you, I think the board needs to make a decision.
Now?
Yes. I, you know, I think I could get you, I think we could extend it until January 4th, your next meeting, but, you know, give us time to ask the union if they're willing to consider an extended trial. But, you know, I'm not sure that they'd be willing to go beyond that.
Understood.
Kate, can I better understand, then, what are the ramifications of anything other than going with the trial?
I'm not sure. Anything other than...
The current operating hours, which we're referring to as a trial.
Yeah, we could go back to the normal, the old hours.
Correct. But what do you foresee as being any ramifications to that decision?
Um, I think there'll be a number of employees who are not happy. But, you know, I think it's a balance. It's, are we providing the services that we need to be providing? And are we getting the impact we wanted for employees as well?
I think you're going to probably have to face at least F state Friday, if not permanently, at least in the summertime. I just don't, the traffic on 985 is such a nightmare on a Friday that I think you're going to have to give that one in. But I'm not sure how you want to really apply it. The problem I have is trying to figure out, you've done so much work successfully now remotely. How are you going to incorporate that into your program?
Kate, I don't think it needs to stop.
No, I know it doesn't. The question is, does that reduce your need for hours?
Um, you mean, hmm, I would say no. So it, generally speaking, no. It's not, it's, things like, people can submit applications remotely, but the work still has to be done in the office. You know, just take the Park and Rec things. We've long been able to do things for Park and Rec online, but work still has to happen in the office. You could maybe, you know, submit your building permit online, but it still has to go through a process in the office. A lot of what we've done online does not reduce our work here. It's making life easier for our residents so that they don't have to come here so they can do it from their homes or from their workplace without having to take time off to come into town hall. But it doesn't change, it doesn't change the work that we have to do.
Correct.
David, did you have a question? Sorry. I saw your hand go up, David.
Well, I was going to ask, Kate, I mean, you know, listening, reading your memo and listening to you talk, it sounds like the data on whether Tuesday night is useful or not is... or not is uncertain at this point. It's hard to tell whether that's really meeting the needs of any, anyone in town. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about how we receive to do a half day thing on Friday? Or does that not solve the problem because people still have to come in for part of the day?
You know, it doesn't solve the problem, um, yeah, it doesn't solve that problem. Um, you know, and that's not to say that we can't have, um, address certain situations individually, but what I don't want to get to, um, I don't want to be in the situation, the position of having, um, multiple employees having different schedules. Um, and the Tuesday night thing, you know, it's, it's, until people start commuting back into the city, we're never going to know if that Tuesday night was valuable. Uh, because that was the idea is that, you know, you know that 7:30 train is the big train, you know, where a lot of people come in. So trying to, um, capture, um, you know, some people who are, you know, able to maybe leave work an hour or so early to come in here and get here by seven o'clock, that you will, you know, we're just not going to see that until people start commuting back into the city in numbers again. I do think, I will tell you, for the employees who, you know, when you work Tuesday night, one of the things you hear is that I can get a lot of work done because there's nobody interrupting you.
Um, I was, sorry, Sarah.
No, Krista, go ahead. I'll ask her first.
No, no.
Kate, do you get the sense that this is a much preferable schedule? I mean, I would assume that it is.
For employees?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they, they like, um, the longer weekend. Um, I do know, um, some, um, it makes it easier to make doctor's appointments, um, and other kinds of appointments. I actually know of one person who was able to take on a second job because they can work on Friday. Um, so yeah, it's, it has been a quality of life thing for employees. Um, I know I sit there, you know, sometimes on Fridays, I say to my husband, what day is today? Does he get confused whether it's Saturday or not? Um, but I have found when I can, I make, I make appointments for Friday because I don't have to take a vacation day, not have to take a sick day.
I'd like to offer a couple of things that, you know, I'm, I focused on the, on the comments and I looked at, there's clearly some areas that, um, they need to be addressed no matter what schedule we pick. So Kate has sent out these comments to all the departments so that they can read through them and, um, kind of embrace the areas that need improvement. Um, you know, I think with people working at home for the foreseeable future, the Tuesday night becomes less of a real benefit to the public, in my opinion. But maybe looking at a half day on Friday in exchange for that Tuesday night might be the way to go. What I would say though is, in looking through these comments, we really should be looking at these to try and make sure that, um, in order to give the best customer service, whether someone's in the, whether the staff is in the office or not in the office, Monday through Friday, everybody should have the ability to get done what they need to get done. And so if there's certain areas that need addressing, either by moving a service online in some way, or if we continue with, uh, being closed on Fridays, that maybe some people are answering emails on the phone on Friday and they swap that for a day that they're not answering emails on the phones. Um, we have a couple of departments that work that way. I know Kate has said she doesn't want to get into different schedules for everybody, but, you know, foundational for me is giving good customer service. And part of giving good customer service to me is getting things in a place where everything can be achieved without walking through the front door if you don't have to, because we're in a new world now and a lot of people don't want to come face to face. And I know that our employees are, um, they've been doing a great job, but certainly they've been put at risk by having the public come face to face. So the, the closed on Fridays has been not only a good mental health break for staff, but also a good physical break for the staff, um, to be out of the environment for three days in a row, which during the pandemic has been bad.
It also does give public works the opportunity to do some things here in town hall without us around to do work that needs to be done without staff here. Um, and I think Jimmy's right there, you know, there's some things when you read through this, see that we could do something to be able to address those issues on Fridays. Um, you know, something as simple as, um, whichever building inspector is on duty on a Friday, have their work phone forwarded to their cell phone so that if somebody calls with a building question, they can answer it. You know, if they need a code question answered, um, somebody's available to answer. I mean, they're, they're out there doing inspections. I don't see that that should be a problem to do that. Um, you know, and some of it would mean, um, people have to plan better. Um, you know, you, you want to get married on Saturday, don't wait until Friday to come get your marriage license.
Krista?
Um, and reading through the comments, and thank you, Kate, for putting together the survey, what resonated with me the most, I am concerned that we, the only one in, in our area here not to go forward with this trial, but more importantly, that the services of the town are not available for three days in a row. That struck with me, that to stay closed on a Friday, which means no accessibility to the health department, obviously, um, in this situation, I think the three day break does not do the service we want for our townspeople, taxpayers.
Just a clarification, Krista, our health department, uh, health director is available 24/7. You know, not for, if there's routine matters, but because of the nature of health, the importance of health, even outside of pandemic times, the health director has to be available 24/7.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, that's a good point, but if it was not a more of a routine type of question, but that's an important clarification. Thank you for making that comment. Um, to me, it's the three days. Um, I mean, if we would take one day off, I would say Wednesday, but I like the idea of a half day Friday.
Sarah, did you have another comment?
Yes, I think one of the things that we were forced to do somewhat with COVID was to put so many of our services online, which was enormous. And there's so many things that one of us would come into the town hall to do that I can now do online, for example, whether it's paying taxes or the beach permit or what have you. And keeping those abilities will reduce some of the traffic flow into town hall. I just don't know if we were to reopen what the, you know, influx would be on Fridays with people now knowing that they can do those things. The only thing I can foresee maybe in the spring and summer is the beach permits on Fridays. The marriage, you know, licenses usually that someone's called and, and already, you know, found out that information so they know, but, uh, you know, I, I think it's a nice thing for the employees and if we can provide residents the same kind of services. The only other question I had, Krista asked about the health department, what about the human services commission? Do we feel like we have any residents that, um, might fall through the cracks on a Friday? Or do we feel like there's enough coverage?
Yeah, I feel confident that Ally is so close and aware of the needs of her clients. Uh, and I'm pretty sure that each and every family has Ally's cell phone number. So I'm actually less worried about, about some of those.
Got it.
Personal needs than I am about someone who, for example, needs a zoning permit of some kind, right?
Yeah, I think that.
Again, customer service is, is important. We all want to make sure that we're giving good customer service.
Yeah, the majority of your department heads are going to check in their email over the weekend. The issue would be more things, um, the routine matters, you know, registering to vote, paying your taxes, getting your, um, food permit, um, you know, how, if we, if we stay closed on Fridays, how do we make that easier to get, um, when you feel that a three day wait is, is too much?
It seemed like the Realtors were, had a fair amount of comments.
Yes.
Is anybody prepared to make a recommendation or do we want to wait till January 4th? Kate, do you have thoughts?
I feel totally inadequate to, to make a recommendation. I really feel it's something that management should decide what to do. I really, you know, the comments, we've gone through them, uh, right now, Tuesday night doesn't look like much of a help. I, I kind of feel the same way about the, being closed for three days is kind of tough at times. And you think that our group one time, um, and another, another issue I can think of that happened because of being closed on Friday, but by and large, this is a management issue. And I just, as a member of a board, I just don't really feel that's something that I really have to opine on, frankly. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I think I might be in your camp on that, Kate, that it's really an operational decision, to put it in sort of board event terms, but, um, we all as a board are very cognizant of making decisions that impact customer service, so.
Agree with that.
You know, I, I put a lot of weight into what Kate and the department heads have to say on this matter.
We agree.
Would like to, you know, if it takes us waiting until January 4th to really get a good feel on what department heads are, are feeling and once they've digested these comments, other ways to address concerns in this, you know, list, so that we don't get complaints if we decide to continue with Friday's closed.
So I can tell you that department heads are generally in favor of continuing. Um, you know, they do recognize some of the, some of the issues, particularly like around the land use issues, um, that some people are not happy with the, um, perceived additional wait, um, if they bring in an application, say to planning and zoning, that it adds a day to their wait time. Um, so I think those are things that could be addressed. You know, we do have, um, some departments, like I said, that have people working on Fridays. Um, the fire marshal's office, for example, um, Bobby Bush and Mark McEwen, um, have split it where Mark is off on Mondays and Bobby's off on Fridays, so that there is coverage for that department five days a week. Um, we can't do that everywhere. We don't have enough, um, people to do that everywhere. Um, but if you're willing to continue with the four day week, that is something we could look at where, um, certain departments provide a person who's on call or working on Fridays.
We, could we try and do that work, uh, in advance of January 4th and see if zoning, for example, and DPW would have people that could be on call and answering the phones or having phones forwarded on Friday? David, did you have a question?
I was going to ask if all the departments really need to be in on Friday. It seemed like the complaints were sort of, you know, hovered around a couple of departments and I didn't know, um, I wanted to defer to Kate on this. I appreciate the issue of getting different work schedules for different groups. I didn't know if there was a way to ameliorate the problem by having, you know, say half day Friday coverage in the departments that where people have been more persistent about, you know, it being a problem of not having access on Friday, or if we could, you know, get these, uh, procedures for, you know, having the, the, uh, building inspectors and fire marshal, uh, you know, do the calling on Fridays. If we can figure out some other mechanisms like that, some sort of hybrid solution, if you will, so that the majority of the departments don't have to, but, uh, they have to find some, uh, partial workaround for, for Fridays for those departments in demand. And maybe it just means, uh, you know, like the fire marshals are doing now where they rotate, right? On Fridays within the department.
Yeah. I mean, there are definitely some departments that don't need to be open on Fridays, um, but it does become a problem, um, when you have some and not all. Um, it could become a staff problem, a morale issue that, you know, they get Fridays off, I don't, um, even though you're working the same number of hours. Um, also, there's the public problem of, you know, we think that this department doesn't need to be open on Fridays until you come in and you want them.
Right.
Um, so, um, yeah, we, we, we've gone through a lot of iterations of, um, of what could be. Um, and, you know, it, um, I, you know, my thought would be, like, you know, it's either, you know, the, the one or two people on call, or you go to, you go back to the normal hours and maybe look at it early closing on Fridays in the summer or something like that. Um, I guess, you know, what really to me depends, how do you feel about the public? Um, are, you know, is there any sense that we're not getting it done for the public because we're closed on Fridays?
And I think I would say that, uh, the sense that I've gotten from you and from everyone else, uh, other than these comments that are sitting right here in front of me in black and white, is that we have been getting it done, but since people have expressed concerns and the actual problems that they had, in one, one way or another, we have to solve these problems. So, um, you know, if, if by staying closed on a Friday, we continue to have complaints about the lack of service availability, that's problematic. And then I would probably recommend that we figure out how to be open for a couple hours on Friday morning, um, you know, skip the Tuesday night, be open for a couple hours on Friday morning. Um, but if we could solve, if we could solve the issue in another way, then I do support the four day work week.
Yeah.
At least if, if you're open for only a couple hours on Friday morning, then, you know, it helps people with the, the commute issue, which is very problematic in and out of Southwestern Connecticut.
Yeah, because they're, they're missing the, the bad commute home on Fridays.
Right.
Um, you know, I, um, one of the other reasons that, you know, and why we had to have negotiations with the union on this was because to go to the four day work week, we needed to go to days that were longer than eight hours. And the town hall union's contract calls for them to be paid overtime, the old one called for them to be paid overtime if they worked in excess of eight hours in a day. So we needed to negotiate that out. Um, we could, it would be not, um, it wouldn't need renegotiating to go back to, um, being open five days, but have, say, four eight hour days in one three hour day on Fridays. Um, that wouldn't require renegotiating all the, um, all the stuff we did. You look puzzled, Krista.
Yeah, no, so we could not go back to, you couldn't go to five eight hour days?
Oh, well, we don't know. Well, that'd be a change. We, the town hall employees work a 35 hour week.
Okay.
So that would be a budget issue.
Right.
Yeah. So our issue was, in order to go to 35 hours in four days, we needed to have workdays that were longer than eight hours. So we needed the union to agree to a change in when they got paid overtime. Um, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't require renegotiation if the decision was to go to being open five days with Fridays being a half day and Monday through Thursday being longer days. being open five days with Fridays being a half day and Monday through Thursday being longer days. I should say, yeah. So eight hour days, Monday through Thursday, and a three hour day on Friday. Does not require renegotiating the contract.
Thirty-two plus three, right?
Yeah.
Or somehow come to 35.
Somehow comes to 35, right.
Is anybody ready to make a decision this evening?
Right. What pieces of additional information, if anything, do you want before January 4?
I think, you know, I'd like to I'd like to make sure that as much work as could be possible on Friday can be accomplished. Do you want to go on mute, Kate?
Yep.
There you go. You know, I want to make sure that we have some way of serving people on a Friday if they need to have something done that's reasonable. You know, I, you know, I don't know, in reading this, if a person who said that they lost a day in permit processing by being closed on Friday. I'd like to understand a little bit more about that. Did they in fact lose a day? Were they not able to submit their application? Was that the problem? Is there a way that we can make sure that applications can get submitted on Friday? And don't and we don't lose any time in the processing, but, you know, it gets into the right inbox?
Okay.
And then anything else that any board members wish to better understand? Okay. Then we will conclude the discussion on January 4. Sound good?
Yeah, can I get a motion to table?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we table the action on the Town Hall hours. Do you have a second?
Second.
Good seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion to table, passes. Okay, we have some appointments this evening. We have the reappointment of Gina Vermelski to the Human Service Commission, who are term expiring on November 30, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve Gina's reappointment.
So moved.
Sarah moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Krista seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Okay, and we have the reappointment of Sarah Demark to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2023. They have a motion to approve Sarah's reappointment.
So moved.
Kate moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Krista seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Okay, thank you. And we have our annual reappointment of our advisory boards. You all have reports from each of our advisory boards in your packet. They'll be in the minutes attached to this meeting. We have the Advisory Board of Health, the Advisory Committee on Sustainability, Government Access TV 79, and the Advisory Commission on Postal Waters. Does anyone have questions about the work of these advisory committees? I'd just like to say that I think they're all doing a wonderful job for the town. The Sustainability Committee is amazing. They have lots of really exciting things planned for next year, including looking at how to perhaps change our town fleet to electric vehicles, which would be awesome. Advisory Committee on Postal Waters has been very engaged in water quality issues, and they helped me a lot with shell fishing, which is terrific. We know how awesome TD 79 is for us. And Advisory Board of Health certainly has been integral through the pandemic. So we're grateful for the work of all of the folks that sit on those advisory committees. Any other questions about these committees before I ask for a motion to approve their reappointment?
No, I just appreciate the updates that were provided.
Yes.
Wonderful to see.
Volunteers and their time. Yes, thank you.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to reappoint those four advisory committees that I outlined.
So moved.
Kate moves. Is that Sarah's second?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, extensions, motion carries. We have meeting, regular meeting minutes from our December 7 meeting. Any corrections or additions? No? Okay. Well, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Kate moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Sarah's second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. Kate, do we have a public comment for this evening?
Sorry, I muted myself. No, there was no public comment.
Okay, great. Agenda review.
I just had, just to circle back on updates, I would say, not looking for dialogue right now, but the Metro North lease, I wasn't sure where that stood.
Right now, it stands kind of nowhere.
Okay.
But I'll ask Wayne for an update.
Or even if it's just contained in your report, next or Jamie's, just where we stood. The, obviously, the gift policy, I know you're working on. The, before we got into budget season, the grant policy that we were, you know, to talk about as to to lay the foundation for the grants as they come in as to what guidance we could be providing the community, what falls in our thoughts as we look at the budget.
Yeah, why don't I put that on your next agenda?
Please, have they been coming in? Any requests yet, Kate?
Yes, I've gotten a couple. They were due to be in on Friday, so anybody who has missed it, you know, we won't consider, well, we shouldn't consider them.
They were due this past Friday?
They were due this past Friday. Yep.
Okay.
But if we haven't put forth a guideline policy, could we extend it?
Now, these we sent out to all, we annually to all people who have gotten grants in the past, we send them a letter asking them in a form that they have to complete, telling them the things that they need to submit to even be considered. So sometimes they fail to send in the request period.
I think Krista's point, don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think your point is that if we're moving to a system of adjudicating grant applications based on a set of criteria, you know, it certainly would be helpful to provide the criteria to the agencies in advance. I think the thing the thing that we, the reason why this grant issue was brought forward was I had felt strongly that for all of our grant recipients, there needs to be a legal agreement between the town and the recipient that outlines what the responsibilities of the recipient are in terms of reporting and the like. Right? So.
I guess I see it as a two step process, Jamie. I see the first step is to outline the policy to which organizations would identify whether or not they could apply to Darian. And that policy would be set by the board. And then the next step, once the application is submitted, outlines the legal requirements of that relationship should the grant be acknowledged and incorporated into the budget. So I guess I saw it as a two step process.
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't think it stops the people who have already submitted and asked for grants from moving forward. You know, we say, here's our policy. Do you still want to move forward?
Oh, right. They're still going to move forward, but we just haven't identified why we give grants to whom. What is the, what's the criteria? I'd like to be clear on that for the community.
Okay.
I don't know whether it's moot now because the deadline's passed, whether this is something instead now for next year, but.
No, I don't think it's, I don't think it's moot.
We can always request more information, Krista, from some of the requesters.
Well, and some of it, I think, would also be a, an agreement that, you know, if you want to, you know, we're going to award you this grant, but you have to do these things to, in order, you know, you have to agree to do these things in order to get it. You know, like reporting during the year, providing a year end final report showing how you spent our money, things like that, that.
Because I understand you were already looking at grants and saying yea or nay, correct?
No.
Oh, I thought that was what we had heard last.
No, so all we've gotten so far is a request from different organizations to give them money. So as we're building our budget, you know, an organization has said, you know, we are asking you to give us X amount of dollars in fiscal '22. And they're providing us information that we've outlined in the past that they have to give us. That doesn't mean that as part of you all agreeing to give Organization X a $20,000 grant, that you can't say, we'll give you this grant, here are the conditions.
Okay, I guess I still would like to see, so we're not getting into minutia every single application. We can at least agree upon a framework, a paradigm to which all these organizations, depending upon the size, the amount of information of the gift, but at least we have a framework for which we're all in agreement, this body. These are the type of recipients.
Yep.
There are there are municipalities that, Kate, I'm sure that we can get information from. I know the town of Greenwich, for example, has a very large community grant fund that I want to say that they give away approximately, you know, to shy of a million dollars every year to various community agencies. So we probably can find out what what criteria they use for.
Okay.
Probably has to be, that probably has to be a Darian agency or an agency that serves a significant population from the town of Darian, right?
We can set the criteria, or what is Ucanan doing? What is Wilton doing? What is Weston doing? Do they already have a framework in place? We don't need to reinvent the wheel, but I'd be curious to know.
Right, okay. Anything else?
The issues I had.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, then I will. Well, before I, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I want to extend to the Board of Selectmen and all of our elected and appointed colleagues and volunteers, town staff, Board of Ed staff, police, public works. I wish you all a really restful and peaceful and healthy holiday season. I'm grateful for the work of each and every one of you, and I look forward to a really positive 2021. We've got a lot of great work to do together, so I'm excited about that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sarah, you have a second?
I wholeheartedly thank you and same to you, Jamie, and I will second.
Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all very much. Happy holidays.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Bye, Merry Christmas.